Good evening, welcome to this, the October 27th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I called the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Branning.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two hundred and forty-fourth, the which contain one nation under the.
Okay, well, we have some proclamations and presentations tonight. We have the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District update. I believe Ryan Klotnitzer, the General Manager, and Dr. Maya Manoharan, the Livermore Trustee will be there presenting the report. Doctor?
Pleasure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Maya Manoharan. I'm the Livermore Delegate to the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. A little bit about me, I am currently in women's health, but I do have a background in public health and infectious disease epidemiology. And this is what led me, led me to this role. I wanted to explore and experience the joy and sometimes fear of vector borne disease again. I am here with Mr. Ryan Klotnitzer, who is our General Manager, and Ms. Judith Pierce, who is our Education and Outreach Officer. And Ryan is going to present an update for you today.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Very much. Thank you, Ann, for having me. It's been a couple of years since I've been here, so thank you again, but I do have some interesting things to report, so I do appreciate your time. If anyone's curious, this is about six minutes long, so it's not super long, but I promise you'll find it interesting. Next slide, please. So I'll go over a brief, if you don't know about the district, who we are, why we are, and what we do. Next slide, please. About a hundred some years ago, they kind of made the discovery that diseases, mosquito disease, are spread by mosquitoes before they didn't know. Malaria is bad air, so they just thought it came from the air. And then they, about in 1900, they started making the connection that these deadly diseases actually came from mosquitoes. And they found out how they could control them. So in the California Health and Safety Code, and through the Legislative Act, the Mosquito Abatement Act in 1915, they said, we need to control mosquitoes. And shortly thereafter, 1930, our district was founded with the power to form a board like you have here. And we can also abate, which means gain access or even fine, and tax through property taxes. Next slide. This is a snapshot of just a property tax bill you may recognize, and you can see us up there. We have about three dollars or so we collect from on the right side of your bill. We also have a share of ad valorem tax, so we're very thankful for that, and we prudently invested to about $6 million to cover the entire county with 20 employees. Next slide, please. Jumping right into biology, most people don't understand that mosquitoes are an aquatic insect, so they spend most of their time in the water. So really, it's, but they have a complete metamorphosis like a butterfly, so they go through egg, pupa, larva, larva pupa adult. And when they emerge, they need blood to create eggs. Next slide. And you'll see there, the eggs, that's how they look blown up, but they're either singularly laid, or they're actually a floating like egg mass. Next slide. But they look like little dots, if you actually see them. They're not very visible. They look like dirt on the side of a, that's, I think, a hot tub right there. Next slide. And the larvae, they need to breathe air, so they have siphons like snorkels. They have to come to the surface to breathe air. So that's why waves or fish will control them actually from breeding. They don't need much water, just a little bit of water. Next slide. You can see here, that's where usually you'll find them in the size of, you know, like just a bottle cap, they can breed. But again, when they hatch, as soon as, only females need blood, because females need blood to create eggs. So anytime you get bit by a mosquito, it's always going to be females. Excellent, excellent. Where do you find them? Well, in this county, we have 23 different species of mosquitoes in Alameda County. And the most common sources, believe it or not, backyard swimming pools. People have unmaintained swimming pools that we have to work with the homeowners or the property owners and say, what are you going to do with this pool? Because it produces tens of thousands of mosquitoes. We have 100% voluntary compliance every year. People gave access to their backyard. And we'll put just fish, we grow our own fish, that's a good way to control mosquitoes in backyards. Tires, potted plants, or even large salt marshes. Next slide, please. Jumping into why we controlled diseases, mainly, there can be really annoying, that's also very, spreads lots of diseases like dengue, chikungunya, Zika, West Nile virus, or the protozoan malaria. Next slide. Thank you so much for, Debbie, for the city clerk. So the primary vectors of dengue, 80s egypti, 80s alapictis, this is very timely for Livermore. Because about two, three weeks ago, we had our first detection of these 80s egypti in Livermore ever. So, next slide. So besides being annoying, this mosquito bites during the day. So most mosquitoes come at dusk and dawn, because they're actually trying to find birds that roost. So they come out, birds roost, the mosquitoes go for the birds. This mosquito likes people. It's the cockroach of mosquitoes. So it follows us around. No one thought this would be established in California. About 13 years ago, it started in the Sancho Valley, Southern California. It's worked its way up. And just a few weeks ago, it's in Livermore now. And you find it not in marshes, not in, you know, in the wild areas, you find it in bird baths and tires and back, toys and just land, random stuff in people's backyards. So it's really more of a backyard source, a commensal species that affects us now. Next slide. So just this year, we've had all these detections. Either we'll find adults in traps, larvae, pupil. Or we actually have a technique where we can test the water. This is a one of a kind technique developed. We can look in the water and see if that species just landed in the water. You don't have any evidence that there's actually an animal there. So that's all the detections you've seen. I think that it blows up the next slide too, please. Yeah, so you can see here in Livermore, we've had those detections. It started over by the airport and the sanitation treatment plant, but it's kind of expanded the neighborhood. Your residents have been excellent, giving us access to your backyards to look for it. A lot of it is just looking for standing water here and there. We had had some early morning spray events. You probably heard about three, four in the morning. We've tried to get it done before five o'clock. And what we do is we put out a bacteria that will find any remaining standing water that will kill the mosquito, which I'll touch on in a bit. Next slide, please. Jumping out of that for a minute, we're going to come back to that, but another thing you think about is malaria. That's the number one deadly mosquito disease in the world, malaria. And we do have the mosquito here. It's an alpha lice freeborn eye. But unlike 80s egypti, you find in little sources, this one is more predictable, large algae mats in lakes and creeks. Next slide, please. So in this area, we have some in Pleasanton, you can see those green dots, we find that mosquito. But for malaria, you need someone with malaria to spread malaria. It doesn't just come out of the blue. West Nile virus is a bird disease. So freeborn eye and malaria, you need actually human case. And we haven't had a human case of malaria in California locally transmitted since the late 80s, 1980s. So it's been a while. But every time we work with the public health partners, when someone travels to this area with malaria, we trap around their house and see if they need those mosquitoes nearby, so it doesn't spread to anybody else. So we have a great partnership with our public health department for that. Next slide, please. West Nile virus, you've probably heard a lot about that. Twenty years ago, it came to this area, and now it's endemic. The mosquitoes are the ones you always annoy you, the ones that fly in your windows at night, that get in your ears, the house mosquitoes. We also have culis rhizithorax, those are like, you ever hang out in a salt, a marsh, anything, cattails, you'll get that. And tarsalus are the ones you'll find in abandoned swimming pools. Next slide. These are more, I think, predictable, that we've been doing this for a generation now. You'll see jeeps driving around, looking in catch basins, you'll find them there. This sanitation treatment plans, we work closely with your public works departments to make sure the water is just moving. That's all that has to happen, is it moves, we don't have to worry about it. And some of these marshes as well, and working in backyards for the swimming pools. Next slide. How we look for them is, again, we have 23 species, and every species comes from somewhere different. We also get birds as well. If a dead bird falls, we trap it, we test it in our lab, and it'll determine if it has any disease from mosquitoes. But we have this little trap here on the left, you'll see, it mimics a mammal. So a mammal breathes carbon dioxide. It thinks, this female thinks it's going to get some blood to form an egg. We tricked it, because we put CO2 in there. And then, then we trap that mosquito, we back to our lab, and then we test it for diseases. We also just have this basic bucket that we put out with this piece of paper in it. The mosquito lands on that egg on that piece of paper. And then we know that we have the diseases. With only 20 employees total for the whole county, it'd be very efficient with our resources, but where to dedicate those resources. Next slide, please. And again, these are some of the apparatus you'll see. You'll see altering vehicles, you'll see trucks, you'll see drones, you'll see all sorts of devices and how we find these mosquitoes. The best way is the most sustainable way, have let the waves do it, let the fish do it, let dumping out water, but sometimes we do have to apply a bacterial pesticide product to control mosquitoes. Next slide, please. Coming up on the horizon, these mosquitoes have been around in Southern California and elsewhere for a while now, and we find out that they've been surviving for millions of years. You know, they've been in America since 1492, since the Columbus Exchange, they found a way to survive, only in California recently. And they've developed resistance to a lot of pesticides, traditional fogging, if you will. So there's other ways to do it, it's called sterile insect techniques. You may have heard this before, you can either zap the mosquitoes with an X-ray, makes them sterile, and the males at least. And then you release the males, and the females believe that they're reproducing, but they're not, and the population goes down. This is being done right now in Los Angeles, Orange Counties, LA, Orange Counties. A bacteria infected mosquitoes, you infect the mosquito with a bacteria that has the same sort of result, where you have incompatible eggs, you don't have loss of production. That has been piloted in Fresno area, and now it's currently being deployed in Sacramento County. And genetically engineering, it's, you're getting the mosquitoes kind of dependent on certain products, you're depending, you're getting them dependent on a certain chemical. And if that chemical's not present, they don't survive. So that has only been piloted in Florida and other countries. There's still waiting on some FDA approvals in California, but our focus really is mostly on the bacteria, and they're radiated eventually to control this mosquito, to prevent it from spreading the diseases I spoke of. Only got a couple more slides here, so, thanks. So for you all, thank you so much. Livermore residents are awesome, they're great. We go out and you guys have been very partners with this. A lot of it is just backyard sources, as I mentioned. What can you do? What can we do together? We can control the public space, but the private space is really on everyone here. If you find water, just dump it after a couple of weeks, you know, simple bird bath, it's fine for a bit, and you can see larvae in it, you know, so that's the main thing. But if you get bit burnt during the day, give us a call. Mosquitoes.org is our website, it's kind of easy to remember. If you have swimming pools, rain barrels, just keep an eye on it, we're here for you. We've been here for almost 100 years. We're here to protect and serve you all for mosquito control, so, next slide, I think I have our contact information there still, and I'm Ryan at mosquitos.org. So if you ever have any questions, you can get ahold of me, our website's mosquitos.org. If you call us, you probably get ahold of Judy, she's in our schools. She also does a lot of events out here as well. I think I went over six minutes, I apologize, but I hope you found it interesting. But thank you all for having me again, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you. Good to see you all again.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we do get midgets calls over there, and we always tell people that they don't bite. They may cluster, they may annoy, but they do provide an ecological resource, and we just kind of say, it will, they will go in ways, but they'll eventually go away, but thanks. Yeah, so thank you so much. Good to see you again.
Race, socio and economic status, and has both immediate and long-term impacts on physical, emotional, and economic well-being. And whereas, one in three women and one in four men will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And children who witness violence in the home are at a greater risk of repeating the cycle of abuse as adults. And whereas, victims of domestic violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, transitional housing, and other supportive services, so they can escape the cycle of abuse. And whereas, the city of Livermore encourages victims of domestic violence and their families to seek assistance from Tri-Valley Haven and other appropriate victims service organizations, and recognizes the compassion and dedication of the individuals who provide services to victims of domestic violence. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Livermore proclaims October 2025 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Livermore, and encourages the community to stand together with Tri-Valley Haven to raise awareness, support survivors, promote healthy and respectful relationships, and work toward a future free from violence.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, City Council members, City of Livermore staff and community members. On behalf of Tri-Valley Haven, I want to thank you for this proclamation, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and your continued partnership creating a safer, stronger Livermore. For nearly 50 years, Tri-Valley Haven has been here for survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, homelessness, and poverty, offering shelter, safety, counseling, and hope. Today, the need for our services is greater than ever. We are seeing a significant increase in the request for emergency domestic violence shelter, homeless shelter, as well as food assistance. As families face rising costs and instability, your steadfast support makes our work possible. Through city collaboration, funding, and advocacy, Tri-Valley Haven is able to keep our doors open 24 hours a day for survivors. Thanks to your incredible partnership of the City of Livermore, Tri-Valley Haven is preparing to break ground November 17th on a new and expanded domestic violence shelter. This vital project will allow us to serve 50% more survivors than their children, providing safe housing, compassionate care, and a foundation for healing. Tri-Valley Haven would not be successful without the City of Livermore's vision, generosity, and unwavering commitment. Because of you, more victims of domestic violence will find safety, stability, and hope right here in our community. Thank you, Mayor Marshawn, City Council, City staff, for standing with us and recognizing the importance of raising awareness about domestic violence. Together, we are building a stronger, safer Livermore where everyone can live free from violence and fear. Thank you. Mayor Marshawn, before you move on to 3.3, 7.1 needs to be continued?
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, and for those who are waiting for 7.1, 7.1 is not going to happen tonight. That's the approval of the, let me see here, get the exact address. That is the planned development PD 25001 subdivision to allow a two-story attached 13-unit multifamily townhome style development at, on East Avenue. So that will be continued until next month. So with that, we will move back to 3.3. And this is the Airport Commission update presented by Chair Darren Bishop and Benedict Stuth.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can you specifically say to November 24th, that items continue to November 24th?
November 24th, okay. Item 7.1 is continued to November 24th.
Thank you.
Okay, take it away.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Marshawn, and City Council meetings. I'm Darren Bishop, Chair of the Airport Commission. I've been on the Airport Commission since 2018 or so. Got a couple of years left, I think, so, good, I got my slides up there. I'll take the next slide. Okay, so the Livermore Airport, one of my reasons for becoming a Airport Commissioner is because the airport is a great asset to our town. And some of the activities that are provided are air tours, there's a lot of flight training, a lot of airline pilots that I fly with have trained at Livermore, and have flown here and practiced from other airports and stuff like that. There's good aircraft maintenance here for other airplanes that are based around the area. And also, there's three-hour organizations here that are really good at supporting STEM education for young people, that's science, technology, electronics, and mathematics. And that's the Experimental Aircraft Association. They are a organization that promotes a building of amateur home-built aircraft. There's Civil Air Patrol, that's, that's a youth organization that's affiliated with the Air Force a little bit, I think. And then also there's Robot Gardens, they have a couple of hangers, and it's kind of like a maker lab where they'd have 3D printers and CNC machines, and they get to build all sorts of really cool stuff with machinery, motors, and software and stuff. The airport is also good for supporting law enforcement and disaster relief services. The Alameda County Sheriff's Department has several aircraft that are based at our airport, and then we also have a lot of flat area for staging other operations. So if there's any disaster relief needed, there's plenty of places to land helicopters and stuff like that, so. There's also emergency medical flight services that use the airport, and there's also Angel Flight, so those are, it's a program run that are, where pilots volunteer their time to provide air transportation for medical and other needs for people that can afford to charter. And also, there's several companies that use our airport because of their proximity to their businesses. And so there's a lot of activity of aircraft flying in with, like Costco, and I think there's a couple of other I know about, but just for executive travel. And about the Airport Commission, we have five members, everybody has to be a Livermore citizen. Three of us have to be pilots, the maximum of two of us can be hangar tenants. We serve a length of four-year terms, and the term limit, it's not two years, like it says up there, it's that, it's actually two terms. So, and right now, there's myself as chair, Chris Dombrowski is our vice chair, and then John Levine, and Victoria Schellenberger, and David Farley are our crew. So the Airport Commission, what we do, the Livermore Remissible Code, there's quoted. "We represent and further the interest of the aviation industry in such representation, and furtherance will ultimately serve the public interest." I didn't prepare this slide package, and there's more inaccuracy in that, the rest of that slide than there is accuracy, as far as I'm concerned. Our role as, as Airport Commission is we're basically advisory. We're advisory to you, the City Council, on three basic things. That's in relation to that Resolution 2010058 for future development, and we are advisory on, on what demand there is for development. We also are advisory for development and redevelopment of existing facilities, like runways or hangar repairs or things like that. And then the, the third thing is we're just advisory on other items as you send to us. So I can example as that, is there's that development that's on the south side of, of Jack London, we were involved in advising on that. Secondly, we are advisory to the Planning Commission, and that's mostly regarding the airport protection area. The airport protection area is, if you take the runways and you add 5,000 feet to the north of the runways, 5,000 feet to the other side, and then 5,000 east and west of the runways, you get about, oh, about three, I can't remember how many square feet it is, but it's pretty large size, and it's, it's, the goal of the airport protection area is to have development inside that area that is compatible with the airport. So, you know, that's why, like, that project that's south of the, of Jack London is lower, lower industrial, so it's, it's height compatible and stuff like that. The incompatible uses would be a lot of high-density housing right under the runways. So we, we are advisory to the Planning Commission on things like that, development possibly inside the airport protectionary, or changes to the sizes of the airport protectionary, or rezoning in there. And then lastly, we are advisory to the airport staff and on any, on things like operations, security, hangar tenant rules and regulations and things like that. Also, we are tasked with other goals of promoting the airport and encouraging participation at airport activities and stuff like that. Some of the past activities we've had is the SMP 39 Development Project, that's the one south of Jack London. And we are, we're, actually, I think we're just about done moving our noise reporting system, or the reports from it, to a monthly website address. So everybody can see it, and, and it's more efficient for city staff too, so. We also, in March, we had a presentation from the consultant that worked on the Airport Land Use and Development Analysis. So we had a meeting about that and had a lot of public comment on that. And so that is, that is still a work in progress, I think, as so far as what the actual development will, that the city wants to accept. But at least the progress, the process is making, they're working on it, so. One of the things that I think, I know several people are waiting for is a request, an RFP from the city, so that they can more specifically tailor their, their desired projects to, for advancement, so. And a little bird that landed on my paper just told me that it's going to come out soon. Also, we supported the, the Fourth of July Airport Celebration, you know, we used to do the open house in October, but now we're, we're back to doing the Fourth of July at the airport. So maybe someday we'll get an airshow again, so that would be, I remember those when I was a kid, so, and I think a lot of kids remember that. We also, we're always looking for a better way to promote quiet flying at Livermore. Obviously, airplanes fly and they make noise. And, you know, just like trains make noise and garbage trucks make noise and this stuff, but when airplanes take off, soon as in the air, they're out of our jurisdiction, they're in the national airspace system. But we try to encourage safe and quiet, friendly flying as much as possible. Some, there's some flying at night, but it's mostly pilots trying to keep their currency, and it's a very small percentage, so. Our goals, that's a new slide, okay, so, continue, we're going to continue what we've been doing. Basically advising the Council, Planning Commission, and staff on matters pertaining to the airport, and we're going to keep promoting the airport as a community asset, I really believe in that. And review and suggest improvements to operations focused efficiency and effectiveness. Actually, yep, I got to hand it to the staff, the airport runs pretty, pretty darn well. When, when there's anything happening, like broken hangar doors and stuff like that, the guys out there are really good, and Angelo's awesome, so. And support the implementation of the airport development strategy, and that's, that's what we're doing, and there's, there's a lot of interest in putting, putting some really cool projects into the, into the airport here that will really help the community, so. Any, is that the last slide? I don't know. Let's see what we got. I'm sorry, I just, I fly for United full-time, I just came in from Zurich, and we looked, Benny and I were going back and forth on this package while I was out of town, and then I got here, and now this is a new pack. So that's it, huh? The next slide? Oh, oh, I thought you were running. I thought, okay, all right, so I'll take the next slide. That is the next development. All right, sorry about this, folks. All right, so the development strategy of airports, you know, I'm sorry about the death by PowerPoint, just reading. Develop an approach for constructing tenant hangers to address the hangar waitlist, and explore creation of a multi-agency public safety complex to improve regional emergency and disaster response. The, and also establish an aviation innovation center for the development of clean and quiet aviation technologies. I think that the EVTOs, the electric, yeah, the big people drones. Pursue avia, advanced aviation technologies such as EVTO to help improve mobility, facilitate advancement in clean, quiet transportation. Okay, so I'm open to questions. I'm anticipating questions on, on unleaded fuel, because usually when I, we have meetings, I get asked about that. And if you'll let me, would you like me to talk about unleaded fuel a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, so we're, we've got.
Just quick, quick question though. Probably two years ago, I asked, well, at that time it was Bakhmad, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. I think now it's just Bad Bay Area Air Quality District. But did they ever implement a grant program to allow pilots to get certification so that pilots could burn unleaded fuel? Because that was part of the problem, you couldn't. burn unleaded fuel? Because that was part of the problem. You couldn't burn unleaded fuel. You couldn't buy it unless your frame and engine were certified for it. And I think the certify, certification was somewhere around about a grand. So there was no real incentive for people to switch to unleaded fuel when they continue to burn leaded.
Well, I, they, you know, what you talked about, that was trying when, when our FBO was trying to get their, their tank approved. He had a really good tank that he got. And it, it, it just, it needed to get certified and the manufacturer gone out of business. So he had, had documentation issues. But that's up and he's selling 94 octane unleaded.
Yeah. Are they, are they selling that much of it? Cause I know that the Bay Area Air Quality Management never responded with the, the grant suggestion. But again, people can't buy it unless they, they're certified for it to burn in their planes.
You want to turn that over to Benny? I know we've sold, it's, they've since July is when they started selling, they've sold about 1,100 gallons so far, but I can't remember. It's like.
Mayor Marshawn, this is Benny Stuth, the Airport Manager. In 2024, we had sold about 1,100 gallons of UL 94. This year, we are actually surpassing 4,000 gallons. So we've quadrupled that number for this year and we're still not done yet. Still have about two more months. We're, we're averaging in between three and 400 gallons a month now.
And about how much leaded fuel do we, do we burn?
About 30,000 gallons.
30,000. Okay. Yes, great.
And in answer to your earlier question about Bachmud, I think you were referring to when we changed the minimum standards to require unleaded fuel. And we had requested Bachmud to start a grant program to help pilots obtain an STC certificate. That's a supplemental type certificate in order to use that fuel in their aircraft. And to date, Bachmud has not established such grant.
Okay, thank you.
The, the costs of the STCs are really not that unreasonable. So it's maybe it was just a couple hundred dollars per airplane or something like that. So, and they've been getting cheaper. Okay, so great. But as far as 100, that, that, that fuel that we have out there, that's, that's suitable for the four-cylinder airplanes, the lower horsepower airplanes. Which most of the training airplanes are, are, are that type of engine. And I suspect their reluctance to, to use a lot of unleaded is possibly just cost, but it sounds like it's been selling more. So. I, I have to say I run it in my dirt bikes. It runs great and it doesn't, it doesn't evaporate and plug up the carburetor. So it's, it's a, it's a good product. The 100 low lead or unleaded that will replace the big engines in, in a lot of airplanes is still under development. The same company, Swift, that makes the 94 octane that we're using at the airport, just got ASTM approval on their 100 unleaded product. And, and Benny just told me today that we're going to probably be one of the first customers to get some of that. So, which will be good. So that's another STC product. There's two other candidates that are in development too. And so hopefully we'll be getting rid of unleaded. Hopefully time will prove them to be reliable and not damaging to, to engines. So that's, that's still work in progress, but it's, they're, they're working on it and we're, we're excited to see, see the 100 unleaded come to town.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Come through Dunbar.
I just had one question. In terms of the certifications for maintaining the registration, you kind of hinted at, which is I think said more explicitly, they have to take off or land near twilight hours to maintain a registration.
Well, no, it's not registration for a pilot to carry passengers. In the daytime, they have to do three takeoffs and landings in the last 90 days. And in order to fly passengers at night, a pilot has to have had three takeoffs and landings to a full stop at night. So if, when, when we go through our, our noise, our, our operations statistics and stuff, we see charts and a lot of times you'll see operations where it's just three takeoffs and landing. And that, you know, and that's what's, that's what's happening is a pilot that is wanting to stay current, maybe he's got relatives coming to town and wants to fly them at night while he'll go out and do his three takeoffs, landing by himself. Now he's proficient and now he can safely fly the, those passengers.
Is that requirement to fly at night, just in general night? I thought it was also maybe twilight or something like that or?
Well, the, the definition of night is an hour past civil twilight and an hour before civil sunrise.
Got it.
Something like that. And in most, most pilots at Livermore choose not to maintain their night currency. The night operations are less than 1% of all the operations at the airport. So I, you know, most of the pilots do not keep night current.
So.
Questions? Okay, excellent.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And I'll see you next year. All right.
Okay. Next we're moving on to the open forum. I'll ask the city clerk to explain how people can participate in the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for all items on the consent calendar. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment for each item pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the city council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin once the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So do we have people who wish to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Sherry Souza, followed by Bill Abumrad, followed by Sandy Gomes.
Good evening. I have, my name is Sherry Souza and I'm here representing the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I have a special request for the city council and staff tonight. I would like to request the city council to reevaluate the temporary sign policy that was adopted in July 2023 by the city council. As a business organization, we have heard from many small business owners in our community. And we would like to request a review of the current policy for temporary signs in the city of Livermore. We believe that there have been unintended consequences regarding the change in this policy made in July 2023. The ordinance disallows signs on public property or rights of way and requires temporary signs to be displayed only on private property for limited periods. This change has affected our community negatively and has unfairly targeted small businesses who are located in strip malls, in industrial parks and out-of-the-way retail locations. The ability of downtown district businesses to use temporary signs on public property and public rights of way is great for those in the downtown business area. But what about the other business owners who do not have the advantage of being located in that area? Many new business owners need those signs to get attention and recognition of their businesses, which may not be obvious to the general public unless a sign is placed in the public right of ways. In an effort to be fair and to represent businesses properly, I would encourage you to create a review committee to discuss the changes that make sense for all of our business owners in Livermore. I, for one, would be willing to be part of a discussion on the possibilities of change to the current ordinance to allow more for our business owners and residents. I have seen young entrepreneurs working diligently to raise money on street corners and development interests without the signage that could accelerate their efforts, such as lemonade stands, honey sales and fundraisers for youth activities. It's hard to make these work when no one knows why you're there or what you're selling. The same goes for small business owners who rent retail space, have signs on their building fronts, but cannot be seen from the street. Many of these businesses are new to town and could jumpstart their business with some sandwich signs placed in the public rights of way. I know that Livermore does want new businesses to be successful, but the current ordinance is not helping them. We understand the thinking behind the ordinance, the public safety concerns and the sign abuse concerns. We also know that there can be some modifications made that would help our small businesses and not intrude on public safety or undesirable advertising. Our request is for further discussion and possible improvement of our current ordinance. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Bill Abumrad, followed by Sandy Gomes, followed by Donna Kabine.
Good evening. My name is Bill Abumrad. Not only am I a resident of Livermore, but I'm the tournament director for probably one of the largest events that takes place here. Every year, the Little League Intermediate World Series. With that event comes people from all over the world. And I'm going to echo what Sherry said, we have the sign ordinance right now that probably has had some unintended consequences, but when you're promoting a big event like ours, you need signage to help people get to that baseball park and also know where parking's at. So I would like to ask the city council to revisit that sign ordinance because I think the intention of it may be good, but some of the unintended consequences have a negative impact on events such as mine. So I would really greatly appreciate if the council would revisit this and see if we can create a win-win for everybody that's involved in this. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandy Gomes, followed by Donna Kabine, followed by Shirley Lewandowski.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, city council members, city staff and Livermore residents. I'm Sandy Gomes. My husband Ed and I are Livermore residents and we're also realtors. I'm speaking tonight to ask the council to reconsider the ban on, on placing temporary signs in the public right of way. I understand why a previous city council established this ban. Unfortunately, as others have said, there were unintended consequences. Small businesses, community organizations, residents holding garage sales and realtors open, open houses were all swept up in the ban. We would at last ask that you add a discussion item to future council agenda. I would be happy to work with you and city staff on creating new sign rules that strike a fair balance between public safety, keeping our great community looking good and allowing businesses and residents to connect with customers and each other. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donna Kabine, followed by Shirley Lewandowski.
Good evening. Thank you for the yearly Airport Commission update. In the future, instead of discussing noise issues, the Airport Commission will review, summarize data and the public will need to check the city's website for the details. This is a concerning procedure since reducing the opportunities for the public to address ongoing and increasing airport, airport noise does not resolve the problem. This only makes finding solutions more difficult. This is not the transparency that residents want from city commissions. Noise from jet aircraft continues to be a major concern. The noise and the public concern is not diminishing. If voluntary noise abatement methods have not worked, the city needs to consider other ways to reduce the jet aircraft noise that disturbs residents' quality of life. The city's consultant, Geocentex, conducted testing this summer at LVK for possible PFOS contamination. Their report to the water board confirmed that elevated PFOS levels are present at LVK in the soil and shallow groundwater. The report makes several recommendations. I respectfully ask that Mr. Southe and/or the city manager update the public with information on the following questions. One, has the Airport Commission received a copy of this report? Two, will you direct the Airport Commission to present this report to the public at the Airport Commission's next meeting? Three, how will elevated PFOS findings affect development plans in the South Hanger area? Specifically, South Hanger S-1. Four, will you agendize this report at a city council meeting in the near future? Since the report reveals elevated levels of PFOS contamination at LVK. Five, are any steps being taken by the current fixed base operator, Mr. Sandu, to sell GAMIE 100 unleaded aviation fuel for piston engine aircraft at LVK? GAMIE 100 UL is FAA approved, certified and is available for sale at several Bay Area airports. Enclosing, increasing transparency with the public about elevated PFOS at LVK and following Geocentex recommendations will improve public relations with residents and make a safer airport for all Tri-Valley residents. Thank you for your consideration.
The next speaker is Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Carl Wenti.
Hi, I'm Shirley Lewandowski, a Dublin resident. Been here before. When residents time and again express their concerns on the negative impacts of airplane noise and air pollution from leaded aviation gas on their health and quality of life, what do residents always hear? They hear from their city councils, their city staffs and airport commissions is that there's nothing that they can do because they don't have the FAA authority to control what the pilots do. And are restricted to the guidelines of the FAA grant fund contracts. Unfortunately, grant, grant conditions like the FAA grant funds are, require cities to bargain away their police power. That power is a sovereign responsibility to protect public health, safety and welfare. That is unconstitutional. The case of the United States versus Windstar Corporation in 1996 states that the quote, reserve power doctrine was developed to prevent public contracts from becoming a quote, threat to the sovereign responsibilities of state governments, unquote. In other words, public contracts are unconstitutional that don't protect the public's health, safety and welfare. The reserve power doctrine was the very essence of how the Santa Clara Board of Supervisors in 2021 and 22 decided and voted to discontinue the sale of leaded aviation gas at the Reed Hillview and San Martin airports and their plan to shut down the Reed Hillview Airport in 2030. Its decision was mainly based on the fact leaded aviation fuel had endangered its public health, safety and welfare of the residents living near and around these airports. Most particularly, the marginalized communities around Reed Hill Airport where thousands of low-income residents, adults and children have let in their blood and bodies from exposure to leaded gas from Reed Hillview. Although that county's board is being challenged, to date, their decision stands. As complex as the factors are involved with the reserve powers doctrine, there are advocacy groups in cities across the nation now using it to resolve their respective concerns with airports affecting their health, safety and quality of life. This council's offering of the SWF unleaded UL at LVK is a step in the right direction. A more comprehensive and the right offer is the GAMIE G100 UL. You need to have a stronger mitigating noise strategy to make pilots more accountable, perhaps financially accountable for the use of the air over the neighborhoods around and at the airport. You actually have the power to do so. The question is, will you do it for the safety, health and quality of life of your constituents? Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wenti.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name's Carl Wenti. As always, I want to thank you all for being crazy enough to run for elected, elected office in this day and age, but of the people, by the people, for the people happens when the people show up and we have the worst form of government, except for every other form that's ever been tried anywhere, full stop, all the way through. I love reading the rise and falls of empires and to think about how we can sustain this republic and it sustains with good people showing up. So, thank you all. For those who put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, salute you. Those who got a badge, first responders, keep us safe. We salute you. To the city staff, like we have a well-run city. I've probably only been looking in for a decade, maybe a decade and a half. I don't feel that old, but it continues to have the distinct feel of a well-run city. Well done. That only happens with good people, with good hires, with good structures, with good systems all the way through. So. I appreciate that and I appreciate being proud of who we are and what we do. So. With that, nothing more. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you, the city staff. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you, the city staff, first responders. Appreciate y'all.
That concludes open forum.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to close the public forum, bring it on to the consent calendar. These are typically items of routine in nature and are usually passed with a single motion. Is there anything that anybody wishes to pull for discussion? I will pull 6.4. I think that's, there's been a lot of misinformation about that and I believe this is extremely important. Thank you for your comments tonight. Sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to have a, just a brief presentation on the Tesla sewer line.
Honorable Mayor Marchand and members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch. 6.4 is going to be presented by Andy Ross, our planning manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mayor, item 6.6 needs to be heard after item 8.1.
Thank you.
Good evening, Birch, and good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the city council. So tonight's item is a cooperative agreement with Alameda County, who's serving as the lead agency for the South Livermore Sewer Expansion Project. So this project would extend sewer services into unincorporated Alameda County in the areas around Buena Vista Avenue, Tesla Road and Greenville Road, and this is following Livermore voter approval of Measure P in 2022. So as I mentioned, Alameda County is the lead on this project and the county has requested city assistance with the design of the sewer project and the city has been collaborating, collaborating with the county staff for quite some time. Here is a map of the areas I just mentioned. The area in red is the proposed alignment. It connects generally up here at East Avenue, runs north-south along Buena Vista Avenue, east-west along Tesla Road. And then at Greenville Road, goes both north to the Martinelli Center, which is a county-owned asset, and again, south towards Poppy Ridge. The blue line is an additional segment for study as requested by the county. So before you tonight are two agreements. The first one is a cooperative funding agreement with Alameda County under which the county would reimburse the city up to $700,000. The $700,000 would cover consultant costs for engineering services as well as the city projects management time, and this would require supplemental appropriation to the city's CIP wastewater fund. Then the second contract is with the consultant, Corallo Engineers, for up to $629,000. That would be reimbursed through county funds. And the scope of that work includes topographic surveys, preliminary engineering services and analysis, as well as some public engagements and workshops to share findings with those along the sewer alignment. A final basis of design report would be completed before or by December 31st, 2026. And so the items for you tonight, staff is recommending adopt two resolutions. The first one would authorize city manager to enter into the cooperation agreement with Alameda County and approve a supplemental appropriation for $700,000 to the CIP wastewater fund. The second resolution would authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Corallo Engineers to prepare a basis of design report for the South Livermore Valley Sewer Expansion Project. And we're available for any questions you may have them.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Did we sort of ran over this because I wanted the information. Do we have any speakers for the consent calendar?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, all right. So just to reiterate, the county is the lead agency on this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so reading through the report, I'll confess, I typically start at the end of the report and get the conclusions and then I work back to find the elements that support that conclusion. And I started my career working in the wastewater industry and for me, BOD report was the biochemical oxygen demand. And so I figured, yeah, sure, I got this. And then I realized, oh, it's basis of design. So it's a lot of acronyms out there. It kind of depends where you are to which acronym. So a great report. Sincerely appreciate the information. I think this is very important for our region. This was supported by the voters and I'm happy to see that this is moving ahead. So I've got my answers. Let's go ahead and open the there's no one else here has a question about that. Let's open the public comment for the consent calendar.
So you want public comment for the whole calendar?
Yes.
Okay. The first speaker is Sherry Souza, followed by Lori Souza, followed by Ellen Marling.
Okay, good evening again, and I am just up here tonight to support this effort with the agreement with the county and to seek the reimbursement for what's been put out there. I think that, you know, the economic vitality of our wine country and the winemakers and the growers out there is vital to the community. And I think we have been searching around for funding for this project for a couple of years now and looking to get some support on it from, we've written letters to Eric Swalwell, we've looked for government money, you know, to try to get this project launched and completed. And I would encourage you to just go to the county and do it. Ask them for, you know, this agreement, get come into an agreement with this and get this project going. It is really important for wine growers out there and and for the businesses that we have here in town as well. And some of the wineries have, like Concanon, I believe, already has the sewer line in there. They're within the city limits. But there are several other wineries out there that are dealing with septic tanks and well water and that kind of thing. And it really would be a huge advantage for us, for our wine country, to have all of these, you know, the sewer line project completed. And so that we can put out a quality product and have, you know, safe, clean water for them and the sewer available to them. So the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce is in support of this effort.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by Ellen Marling, followed by Carl Wentie.
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor Marchand, city council members, staff. I'm Lori Souza and I've been a resident of Livermore since 1979. And I'm also the former Tri-Valley Conservancy Board Chair. And I wanted to thank the city staff and the county staff for working cooperatively on this project. It's really critically important. The resolutions before you tonight are needed to move towards construction of an extension of the sanitary sewer lines to serve both commercial and residential users in the South Livermore Valley Agricultural Preserve. The critical infrastructure development is necessary to address groundwater quality issues and to support a flourishing agricultural tourism economy. A significant majority of Livermore voters have shown their support for this initiative, having passed it in November of 2022, that allows for the extension of the sewer services beyond the Livermore urban growth boundary to areas reliant on septic systems today. That Livermore wine country is vital part of our local economy and quality of life is experiencing a concerning decline. Without the extension of these essential sewer services, the growth potential at the wine industry and broader agritourism sectors will face further setbacks. I respectfully, respectfully urge you to vote for you to accept the staff recommendations to approve these two resolutions before you this evening. And anything you can do to expedite the project would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ellen Marling, followed by Carl Wentie, followed by Mark Claren.
Hello, this is about 5.3. I believe this is the one, the improvement of the bike lane near Isabel and Stanley. I did want to mention that active transportation such as bicycle riding will be the key to Livermore's future. I imagine that with the walkable communities around Isabel Crossing, this sort of infrastructure will be even more critical in that area. Many years ago, I used this intersection bicycling to Los Pacitas. Continues to be important for me often when I'm doing my runs. So this sort of development is important. It is essential for Livermore's future. What I cannot speak to and what I'm not certain about is the efficacy of these measures which we're spending a lot of money on. I'm a little bit uncertain about that, but I do thank you for doing as much as you can using scientifically-backed methods to make active transportation more safe in Livermore. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wentie, followed by Mark Claren.
Mr. Mayor, Council, again, thank you for what you do. Thanks for those bulletproof vests, keep us safe, first responders to the great city staff and the likes. I appreciate y'all on the entire consent calendar. Just want to show appreciation, pay homage to the volume of work that goes into that packet as you go through all of it. And again, there's just overwhelming evidence. It seems like we're a well-run city and that does not happen on accident. This happens based on the culture, how people show up, the leadership and what flows. So thank you. Like, it's, and please lest we not forget, even though my generation's not very vocal in this dance, the fiscal responsibility of our entity is so very critical and we have an ongoing display of that getting after the capital assets that we have, getting after just the day-to-day maintenance of this city. So appreciation and keep it up. Needless to say, it's been a long time coming from the South Valley area plan, the South Valley specific plan of the city of Livermore. Measure D is passed by the electorate of Alameda County in 2000, followed by another Measure D in 2020. Somewhere in there, a Measure P for the city of Livermore to extend it. You have overwhelming, ongoing support for this. I think you guys know what the right thing to do is. Swalwell is in, right? Still calls it Nancy's bill from getting that money in there. Dave Halper is in, county in and the likes. The necessary needed infrastructure for the success of the land that was put aside in perpetuity is needed for the economic success. Times are tough. Times were tough before tariffs hit, right? We're one of the only that export a reasonable amount, but times were tough before that. So times are tough in the wine industry. It's been going for a long, 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 long time. Anything to expedite the years, the weeks, the months, anything to expedite. Lead agency is the county. Obviously, it has to flow into our system, your system for which you have the responsibility to maintain and go. Months matter, quarters matter, weeks matter. Please do everything in our power to expedite this along. Good for the goose, good for the gander, overwhelming support with every election, with every poll, with everything that we've seen. Time matters. Time is of the essence for our wine country. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mark Claren.
Mayor, Council, thank you guys for hearing me. I pretty much echo a lot of what Carl said. I'm a winemaker, local winemaker here, and I'm here to support you guys expediting, helping with the county, getting this, you know, this sewer line built, you know, this to really help us stay alive. And so I want to say thank you very much. I'm supportive.
That concludes open, uh, public comments, excuse me.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public forum, bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor.
I just want to comment a little bit on what some of the speakers said. So one, as I do want to encourage staff very much to expedite this, but also as we're talking to the county, I want to make sure that we frame this properly. Our wine country is not just the backbone for Livermore. It is a regional asset. It is absolutely vital for the county as a whole. This is not a single supervisor issue. This is not a narrow Livermore issue. We really need to make sure that we are always framing this. This is a regional issue. This is something that will support the economy throughout the entire throughout the entire valley as well as through the broader Alameda County. And so when we're talking about the existential threat that the wineries face right now, this is something that will ripple throughout the county. And so the more support we can get, the faster we can move and, you know, the better investment we have, the better for all of us. So please make sure as we're framing this, it is, this is very much a regional issue and a time-sensitive issue. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, customer wrong.
So the design report is expected to be completed at the end of 2026. Do you have any idea how long it would take to actually complete the project itself?
Overall project.
So we don't have a sense of where you're talking?
It could take a year plus, but again, the basis of design will help us break it into smaller compartments so that we can, the county can move forward in a most efficient manner that they see fit.
Okay. And so I want to echo what the speakers and Vice Mayor Branding have said, the importance of expediting this and making it a real priority. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just add very quickly, this is your city manager, Mariana Birch. I just wanted to emphasize for the public that this project is in the county and as Mr. Ross mentioned, will be led by the county. The city stepped in at the county's request because the county didn't have the capacity to conduct the design studies. So we're assisting with that early phase of the project. By the timing will depend on the county availability, on the funding availability. We will continue working very closely with our partners in the county on the timelines. And if there's anything that the city can do to expedite the project, we will certainly be available to do so. And we'll definitely keep the city council updated.
Yes, we're done, Bar.
A few things. First on that one, just my appreciation to engineering staff. I know despite contracting out some of it, the oversight is not free, takes time. So thanks for keeping that in your back burner and keeping it moving. On some of the other things on the consent calendar, I just wanted to assure that this money for the connector ramp at Isabel and Stanley is a worthwhile project. As you may remember, Christine Boyle was hit and killed there while riding her bike seven years ago, and we're looking forward to making some improvements there. Late, but still necessary. Wanted to call out just the great financial responsibility that's throughout this entire packet. We're getting streetlights installed. We are in a surplus and we are making those surplus funds go responsibly towards workers' compensation and future reserves, not depleting them as I've heard stories of other cities do in times where good, and then recognizing that there was nothing left for them to grab when the times got bad. So thank you for all the work that was inherent in this consent calendar, but lots of work went into it.
Well, I'm not able to jump on a wagon here. I know the wineries are hurting and one day I saw Carl and I said, what's going on? I haven't seen you in a while. He goes, well, he's putting more time in with the winery. And it is vital to our area and I'm pretty sure our elected officials in the area are supporting it. And I do appreciate the staff, but I know some of these things take a while to get rolling. And hopefully there will be no snags in the future, but I appreciate the wine country and what they're doing and maybe someday we'll get that wine country hotel built too.
There you go. Okay, with that, echoing what everyone else said and with regards to 6.5 and the general flood and surplus and the use for the reserves, congratulations, Ms. Olson for, and Ms. Birch as well and for all the staff because all of you are coming together and making that happen. So when I look at all of the cities around us that are dealing with deficits and they're cutting services and I look and see that we have a surplus and we're putting, we're reinvesting that wisely. So my thanks to all of you for the great work that you're all doing. So with that, we are going to move 6.6 until after we vote on 8.1. 7.1 being continued to November 24th. So do we have a motion to move 6.1 to 6.5?
I'll move 6.1. I'll move 6.1 to 6.5.
Motion made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Verintos. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, passed unanimously, thank you. Moving on to 8.1, this is the resolution approving the amendment to the city manager's employment contract.
Mayor Marchand, members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Birch. And item 8.1 is going to be presented by Tina Olson, Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening, as Mariana said, I'm Tina Olson, your administrative services director, and I'll be presenting the city manager contract amendment item. So, as you know, city council conducted a performance evaluation of the city manager at the October 13th City Council closed session and directed the evaluation subcommittee, which is comprised of the mayor and vice mayor, to negotiate with the city manager an amendment to the contract. The evaluation subcommittee, after those conversations, recommends adjusting the city manager's deferred compensation contribution by $327.85 per pay period. I think both the council and the committee recognize the lower costs the city has associated with city manager's pepper status, and that's related to her pension formula. Also included in the contract amendment is the city manager's existing contract provides for the same cost of living adjustments as LMG with the Livermore Management Group, which was 6%, and that's also in the amendment. So, staff recommends city council adopt the resolution approving the amendment of the city manager contract, which is effective November 17th, 2025. And for item 6.6, adopt a resolution amending the city's salary plan to reflect the salary increases for the city manager and the executive team, excluding the police chief, who received a salary increase in July along with the police management group, effective November 17th, 2025, and then minimum wage increases effective December 29th, 2025. And that concludes my presentation.
No public comments been received.
I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council, any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Motion made by Councilmember Dunbar.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, the passage unanimously. And just to reiterate that the the committee and also the entire council had great praise for the job that our city manager is doing, that again, as I look around and see the way some of the other cities are being operated, and I'm very proud of how Livermore and the staff are coming together and continue to make this a remarkable city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, and your praise goes to the entire city staff. We do have an exceptional team in place, and that's why my job is really not that difficult, given the team that we have. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, now, we will go back to 6.6. Do I have a motion for 6.6?
I'll move 6.6.
Motion made for 6.6 by the Vice Mayor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, passage unanimously.
Mayor, for the record, I just want to let, you know, there's no public comment for that one.
Pardon me?
No public comment for that one, just for the record.
I thought I asked about that.
Not this item particularly.
Okay, all right. Very good then, okay, so, the no public comment, moving on to matters initiated and council member reports. Councilmember Dunbar?
I was late, I submitted, so we can put them in after the fact. But the main one I'll highlight was the Water Liaison Committee that I went to last week, where Cal Water presented, their main message was that, you know, water out of the hydrant is only one piece of a firefighting strategy, it is not the be-all, end-all. And they've talked about how their system tries to mitigate any deficiencies so that the entire system works for fighting fires. And I wanted to call out Zone 7 presented with information about the wells that they had been digging in Pleasanton. They were test wells to check out, things were going positively there. So, they're putting together a case for the expenses to actually go dig a proper well. The well, you know, as some of you already probably know, you know, groundwater is a storage system. It is not the way that we get all of our water continuously, but it's one of many strategies to make sure we have a good supply in the Tri-Valley.
Which for summer peaking primarily, it's not water supply, it's summer peaking.
They talked specifically about, they like can measure the exact rate that the releases from the mocho gets into the groundwater, and they can figure out exactly where it's going. Very interesting.
Okay, Councilmember Wong?
I just want to highlight two quick things, last Friday was a national youth walkout on the climate, and our school district happened to have, it wasn't a student day, so students from Granada and Livermore High gathered downtown and held a rally for the climate and in support of the Make Polluters Pay Bill. So, that was, it was really great to see youth out there. And then this morning, Vice Mayor Branning and I attended a press conference held by State Senator Ayusha Wahab. She had called for an investigation of the Alameda County Department of Family, Child and Family Services, in particular, how they're handling foster youth in our county, and have found very serious concerns. And she held a press conference to call for immediate action in the county to address them. And so, Vice Mayor Branning and I were there to support that.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Verintos?
Well, you saw the report. The only thing, I forgot to bring my frog costume today. I went to the Little Kings Valley and left my costumes over. So, anyway, I thank you today for all the information and the staff did today.
Vice Mayor? Okay, thank you. So, in my report, the only thing I really wanted to add on is that we had the Lafta Projects and Services meeting today, one of the items on there was about business outreach from Lafta. And they've been doing a lot, particularly in the Hacienda area. And they are looking to Livermore, since we have some large industrial areas that could well be served by the Lafta Business Services Agreement. So, something that we can hopefully try to help facilitate with them. Other than that, next time you see me, it will be No Shape November. So, anyone who is interested in that, there are multiple different charitable organizations. I'll be doing one with First Street Ale House, where we raise money for Rooms of Hope. So, you'll probably hear about that a few times coming up. With that, I do have two matters initiated for today. So, the first one is, we had a number of different groups come out today to speak about the sign ordinance and revisiting it. I think there's been a lot of advantages of the ordinance we have right now, but I do think that they've made some really good points about possible modifications we might be able to make. So, I'd like to ask if staff is able to conduct some outreach, see what kind of suggestions there may be, and then from there, see what next steps might look like to revisit that. Okay. And then the second one is, we've had some issues with legal food vendors, and I would just like to ask staff to look at possible remedies for that to make sure that we're supporting our local businesses, making sure they're able to thrive while not encouraging or allowing illegal businesses.
Okay, and I think we need to, we get three nods on the reviewing the sign ban, okay. And we got Sherri Souza and Sandy Gomes both volunteered to work on a subcommittee, so if that does. Okay, and so, a couple of things, the trunk or treat, what an amazing success that was. The 26-foot tall pumpkin and the inflatable skeleton, those were, those were remarkable. The Alameda County bringing in their helicopter, what an amazing event. And I know last year, we had, there were several thousand children, do we get, actually get an account on how big that was?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if we have the final count, but.
Last year was like 5,000, but I'd like to acknowledge all the staff and all the time that was volunteered. I know a lot of businesses donated to that, Cal Water donated a whole boatload of candy for that. And so, thanks to all of you, because that was your time, it's your time and effort. So, greatly appreciate all of that. And also, I was, I am the co-chair of the U.S. Conference of Mayors Water Council. And last week, Livermore hosted the Water Council, we had mayors from all over the country that were here. And one of the things we targeted, spoke about was PFOS and the impacts and some of the solutions. And Zone 7 was there and presented a great presentation on removal of the PFOS. We had another great presentation on removal of arsenic. So, we're right at the center of all of this, so sincerely appreciate everyone's efforts on that. In addition to the sign ban consideration, next month is Veterans Day, and we typically fly the POW flag during Veterans Week. So, if we could bring that back so we could consider it. And since we just reviewed the, or just renewed the compensation study for the city, bring back the, I know we were doing some work on the council compensation, and we're very limited as far as, we can't raise our salaries past what the CIP is. So, just bring that back and so that we don't lose the ability to adjust that if we need to. Okay, so with that, there being no further business before the council, looking over at Debbie, I didn't miss anything. Okay, all right, with that, yes.
I just wanted to note that we had a fatality this morning on a motorcycle, and also that the, you know, Halloween is one of the most deadly days of the year for crashes, so please drive carefully.
Kids should wear bright colors, carry flashlights, I got my Halloween tie here. So, yes, the, please, please be careful and traveling groups. Great, thank you very much, with that, meeting adjourned.
Hey, Branning. I can't hear, that sounds a damn thing.